I'd like to call to order the City of Douglasville's City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, July 11th, 2024. Our invocation will be done by Elder Zarenia Johnson of the Harvest for Christ Church. If you're here, would you please come forward and give us the invocation, please? And after that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Most heavenly and gracious Father, Lord God, we thank you. We take a moment to pause and just say, thank you for allowing each and every one of us to be here, Lord God. Lord God, we ask that this meeting will go as planned. We ask that you will continue to strengthen each and every one of the individuals that is in this room. It is in Jesus' name that we pray, and we say, amen. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Elder Johnson, we appreciate the invocation and prayer. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. This is obviously a vacation month, and so we have not a quorum, but it's okay for us to still handle business. We're not taking any votes until next Monday, so we'll move on with the business that we're here for this evening. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken on the items this evening, but it will take place next Monday at our 6:00 PM voting meeting. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Items comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol issues, so that we don't have any misunderstandings on how the meeting will be run this evening, and then we'll move on with the agenda as it is presented. I will ask that only one person will speak at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, or speak from the audience, or carry on a conversation or cheer in any of that manner when you're at the podium. We ask that when you come to the podium that you will please give us your name and address for the record, and we ask that you will not have any attack on any individual or group of individuals. Please do not call out individuals' names or groups of people and point. Just direct all of your comments and concerns to the committee chairperson. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. And the agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or a representative of that item will come forward, an applicant, make his or her presentation. Myself and councilmembers will possibly ask clarifying questions. The committee chairperson, if there is a public hearing, will call for the public hearing. It's 30 minutes for the entire person to present, and then we'll have a maximum of 20 minutes for those that are in favor of the item, and 20 minutes for those in opposition. And each person has five minutes to speak. If it goes beyond 20 minutes, we ask that you would divvy up your time, and each person will have three minutes or so, but each side has 20 minutes to address the concern. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record, and there are some blue cards outside on the table. We ask that you will please fill those out and give those to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace, and she will put them in the record. Each person has one opportunity to speak. It's not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions on Monday. If you have any printed material, I ask that you will please give that to our Assistant City Clerk. She will make copies and disseminate that information to us, and so that we can take that into consideration. It's a whole lot of information, and hopefully everyone's on the same page, and that's the protocol that we'll go with this evening. There are printed copies of the agenda outside. If you'd like to have a printed copy, they're outside on the desk. If not, you can follow us on the screen. Now, we'll move on with the agenda as it is presented. We're down to item number five, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Council Member Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
And that is to consider for adoption a resolution approving the execution and delivery of a proposed inducement agreement with DCB Atlanta West LLC for the acquisition and construction of a co-location data center expansion in the city of Douglasville, Georgia.
Okay.
And the illustrious Mr. Chris Pumphrey will provide us with the background on that.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, 8512 Bowden Street. It's a pleasure to be with you all here this evening to discuss this project, which is an expansion of a project that we presented to you all last year. And so we're going to be able to discuss with you in more detail about this project. But also with me here this evening is Chris Gatch, who also presented to you last summer, actually, as well, who's a VP of Corporate Development for DC Blocks. So I'm going to have him come up and talk about his project, which you have the print outs for in front of you. And we'll let him present first, and then we'll come back and talk a little bit more about the details of the project.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it's good to be back. Good evening.
Good evening.
I think you all have the printed material that I think we were able to get it to you ahead of the meeting. Okay, so I'm just, first of all, excited to be back and talking about a potential expansion of our project. If you remember, a little over a year ago, you approved incentives for us to develop the first phase of our project, and we have now started construction. We're underway. We bonded approximately $1.2 billion of bonds to build a data center campus that provides approximately 120 megawatts of critical power. And again, the cost of construction on that phase was $1.2 billion, which we did bond. And as you can see in the pictures on this slide, we are underway, moving dirt and just doing all of the land development work on Slide 2. I just wanted to kind of show you that we were in progress. It was a lot of topology on that site. We've moved a lot of dirt, but we're making great progress, and we are also making very good progress in discussions in terms of leasing that site. So far, so good. Just as a quick reminder on Slide 3, this is the site plan of what we originally planned, kind of Phase 1. And what you'll see on this is two buildings that we are building. And just for a frame of reference, that building on the bottom is about 250,000 square feet per level, so it's a half a million square foot building that will, in its entirety, house servers for both cloud computing and artificial intelligence. And then the building above that is a 40-megawatt building, roughly half the footprint of the first one. And then on the back right of that parcel is where a substation is being built for us by Greystone, and that substation will be capable of serving a total of 300 megawatts utility power, 200 critical power. We are now excited because we, when we were here last time, first of all, we didn't have visibility to enough business to develop beyond the first 1 point, beyond the first 120 megawatts, but we also did not have commitments from Greystone for enough power. Power sourcing is becoming very challenging in the Atlanta area. Since that time, both in conversations with customers about the prospect of leasing the additional site, as well as working with Greystone, we've been able to build confidence that we will be able to secure power for an expansion phase. So our goal now is to purchase this additional parcel on Slide 4 on the right, to purchase this additional parcel that Rooker Development Company has remaining in that development. And there's a lot of topology on that site, so we're able to get one building pad, but we are able to fit a new 80-megawatt building. So upon leasing that building and constructing it, the total cost of construction will be an additional $800 million beyond the $1.2 billion that we've already earmarked for the first phase of the project. So we are, again, working with Greystone on finalizing the details of securing that power, but very confident we're going to be able to be able to do that. Just on Slide 5, very briefly, and then I'll stop for questions, is kind of a layout in terms of timing of capital investment, but again, the idea here is we would be seeking bonds related to incentives for $800 million of total construction. And just a couple of notes. Our belief is that for that particular site, a data center is by far its highest and best use. And in addition to that, I also believe that on that site, DC Blocks is probably the only company that can put a data center on that location, because if you'll see on my previous slide where that building is located, there's only space on that site for one pad. And so there's two issues. If you build a substation on that site to provide additional power, there's probably not enough room left to put a data center. So the way we're able to make it into a data center and create this kind of density of development on it in terms of dollars is by using the substation we're building on our first site. We're upsizing that substation to provide power to this site. So I truly believe that if somebody else was to come along and try to make it a data center, they would not have the room to do both the building and the substation, therefore reducing its attractiveness for that purpose. So our view is probably the next alternative is that site would go back to its original purpose, which was a logistics building that Mr. Rooker was going to build. And obviously, our belief is, you know, with the density of dollars we can put on that site, it's a much better use with very low impact to the community in terms of traffic and all the good things you guys know about other data centers you've approved. So again, we're extremely excited. This will make us, you know, obviously, a very larger investor in the community, and just here to answer any questions you might have about this additional development.
Thank you, sir. We'll open the floor at this time. Any other, the mayor or any other council members here have any questions or comments at this time?
Absorbing the information, any more incentives that are you seeking, Mr. Pumphrey? Yes, this is what part of the whole package deal?
Chris, let me ask you a pointed question here, which I think was put to me by somebody. This is a company that's already in Douglasville. Why would we be giving incentives to a company that's already here? Do you want to explain that?
Yes, yes. So incentives are meant to encourage investment, right? And so encourage investment comes in a form, it comes in a form of attracting new companies to the community, and the encouragement investment also comes to support companies that are already here. A lot of times for companies that are already here, they can choose to do that investment here, or they can choose to do that investment in other locations. So we typically want that investment to happen here in the community. DC Blocks has already made, is making an investment here in the community. In particular, with this particular project, they are under construction on the original investment. They're not technically in operation yet. So actually, what we're looking at with this particular project is just to expand the scope of what we approved last year for a project that actually won't go into operation until probably 2026. So we're looking, we're just expanding the scope of something that will go into operation in two years from now.
And that expansion could occur in another community if
It definitely could.
If the investment environment isn't adequate here.
That is correct.
Okay. Talk a little about the jobs, too, because I know that there weren't a lot, this is not going to create a lot of permanent jobs in the community, but discuss that issue as part of your calculation for the incentive.
Yes, so with that, one of the things about with data centers in particular, there's a tremendous amount of construction that goes on. So you probably saw on the slide, there's a lot of trade workers that are working on the site from the construction standpoint. If you ever get it, we probably should do this, is just set up a tour to actually just go to Riverside West, so you can actually just see the magnitude of construction that is going on in that park. It is, over the entirety of the park, you'll see a tremendous amount of construction workers in that park today. There's probably over 500 people working out there, just from a construction standpoint. And so there's a ton of construction that is ongoing, and will be ongoing for years. From a permanent employment standpoint, when we approved the project last year, it was $1.2 billion with six committed jobs from DC Blocks. What we're doing this go-around is we're expanding that, and so it's an additional $800 million in investment and bringing the total jobs up to 25, with an average salary of 60, average hourly wage of $62.50 an hour, which equates to an average annual salary of $130,000 a year. So 25 permanent jobs by DC Blocks of $130,000 a year that are permanent to the operation by DC Blocks. And then when we talk about their clients, they're who bring the servers in, there's jobs on top of that as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, you mentioned this is going to be an AI center, that's going to be part of the data processing.
Correct, yeah. Most of the customers, the potential customers that we're now talking to, interestingly enough, are all planning. We probably will lease that entire campus to one customer, believe it or not, just there's so much demand right now for AI-related deployment. And pretty much every tenant that we're talking to is doing a mix of both cloud deployment and AI deployment, which is, will be, which means design updates, so we'll be doing more like direct-to-chip liquid cooling, which is kind of interesting, but yes, it will be almost certainly a lot of AI-related processing happening there, as well as in other parts of that campus.
This isn't the building that Kyle Reese is going to have to blow up at the end of Terminator 10, is he? When the AI takes over?
Yeah, yeah, hopefully not.
Dreaded AI.
All right, you're spending a lot of money. We don't want to see it blown up.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? We appreciate your confidence in Douglasville and wanting to invest a cool billion or $2 in the location, so we can't really put this in, I don't know if we can put anything on the consent agenda without a majority tonight, so nothing is going to go on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll be voting on this on Monday, so.
All right.
Thank you very much for presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all we have under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Mr. Pumphrey. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And representing from DC Block. Now we'll move on to the Finance Committee. I'll ask Council Member Nicole Miller, as part of that committee, please to take this committee for me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item this evening under Finance, and that is to adopt a resolution enacting a new fee schedule for city sanitation services to be effective August 1st of 2024, and our very own Mr. Greg Roberts is going to go over this with us.
Thank you.
Good evening, excuse me, trying to have a summer cold. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Greg Roberts, Public Services Department. Just a quick little overview on this. Part of the issue has been that one of our contractors, and we knew they were not giving us increases the last three or four years, but you know, you don't call people and ask them to give you an increase. So one of the contractors, GFL, I do not know why, they've not really told us why, but for the last three or four years, they've not really been giving us routine increases. So they gave us a 20% increase effective July 1 last week. So obviously, we don't have those invoices in for another few weeks, but it did become effective for the month of July, and they gave us that information early, mid-June. So it took us a while to put some things together, because as you know, we had not that long ago adjusted, or at least discussed sanitation rates, and that we would be looking at increases, and we felt like we knew what those were at the time, but here we are with a pretty significant increase. And what I will say is Republic Services, this is all about the disposal of waste. So we primarily use the transfer station here at West Side off of Highway 78 near the Rock Quarry, for those that do not know that. And then on the east side of town, for Riverside Parkway and Thornton Road area, we use the Lee Transfer Station, that's just barely over in the Cobb County line off of Thornton Road, and that is owned and operated by Republic. So Republic has routinely given us increases once, twice a year as they saw the need to do it, CPI increases, and so that's why we're sort of having to deal with this now. The overwhelming majority of our waste is deposited at the West Side Transfer Station. So that's, in a nutshell, what it means. Now, for commercial sanitation, that is for front-load garbage services. For people that do not know what a front-load container is, it's what most people just call a dumpster. It's got the sliding doors on the side, and you've got the door that lifts on top. So we're having to go up 20% across the board for front-load services. And then the roll-off containers are typically what we use for compactors. We have a lot of compactors in the city of Douglasville, being the West Side Shopping Center west of Atlanta, and so got a lot of compactors all along Thornton Road, Riverside Parkway, all over our business district, Chapel Hill Road, Douglas Boulevard. So we move a lot of compactors on a daily basis. So the roll-offs are having to be dealt with at a 20% increase as well going forward. Residential side, we're only going to, we're only asking you to do a 9% increase, and that's what we had talked about previously at the staff level, and so that's what is on this. So pretty much in a nutshell, that's what we're talking about. One question that I'll answer that's not been asked, but I know people have questions. And so one question is about commercial rates, but we pay for a lot of services with our sanitation rates. And it's the, Ms. Hampton and Ms. Callen have worked with me for a long time. I always call it the left pocket, right pocket rule. If something costs a dollar, you may have to take money out of your left pocket and money out of your right pocket to pay for it. So the city has always used the sanitation services to pay for beautification projects, different things like that, so it doesn't hit property taxes. It's funded through mostly commercial rates and then for residential rates. And one thing I will, one other thing I'll mention is on that last page of your agenda item, down at the bottom, shows the new residential rates. And I'll just pick up on that second line where it shows one 90-gallon cart. That is overwhelmingly the use of most of our citizens. We do have citizens, some citizens with 65-gallon carts, some have 290s, but the 90-gallon cart is currently $22.50 per month, and that will increase to $24.53 per month. It's an increase of $2.03. So generally speaking, across the board, that's what we're talking about. It's a, it's a two, about a less than $3 increase on those individual services. So any questions?
Thank you so much for explaining all that to us. I don't know about you guys, but I had to, I had to look at the actual dollar amount because when I heard 9%, that sounds pretty tough, but when you look at it ranging from 90 cent to $2.61, if you have two of the 90 gallons, and then we will be locked in at this rate, tell me one more time, for how long on the residential side?
What was the last, what was the question?
Once we adopt this rate, how long will we be locked in at this rate?
For six months. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, that's a reference to me. But I do not see that we would be, there would be any need to deal with it for the next year or so. I don't know of any substantial reason, but it's hard to answer that question, to be honest with you.
For some reason, I was thinking that we had done something so that we would automatically be looking at it. It was like every three years or two?
Yeah, we have automatic rate increases. This is inflationary adjustments based on the new agreement, so that's the reason why you're having an adjustment at this time.
Okay, so then that is factored differently then? So then really
Ms. Callen can address that, because we have those factored in the budget.
Yes, so for commercial, we do have an escalation every year of 3% for residential, for residents. We hold steady until 2027.
Okay.
And so if you'll see, look through your attachment, you can see that listed. So for commercial, it's a 3% escalation, and then for residential, it does, it stays like it is until 2027.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for explaining that to me a little better. Guys, do you have questions about that?
I do.
Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am?
I do. I just got confused, Ms. Callen. So I know that the company, CPI, not CPI, but
GFL?
Yes, that acronym. Raised everything by 20% for commercial and 9% for residential. And you just said we have it locked in, because we had talked about this during our budget hearings, for three years until 2027. So does this immediately change that three-year projection that we said because we received this increase? Are we passing this on now that it'll go from $22 to $2.30 raise?
Yes, so we did
So that's what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. So and before, well, before we, the 20% increase was presented to us after we adopted our budget.
Okay.
So this is a new, but we had not gone to you yet to change the rates.
Okay.
So now that we, they've given us another increase of 20%, and before we had adopted our rates, we thought it best for the sanitation fund to go ahead and, you know, because we don't want to take a loss every year.
Right, for the next three years until we are able to make up this 20% and the 9% that the company put on us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, I understand. The seniors, I do see the senior rate of $10, and it's just going up to $10.90?
Yes, ma'am, 90 cents a month for seniors.
Okay, so they're
90 cent increase.
90 cent increase. So it goes from $10 to $10.90 a month?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that is once they, the age is 65? What's the age for seniors?
65. 65, yes.
65 and older, and they have to apply?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions down there?
Sam needs to apply, so you
So we have to go online to apply?
Send your application.
Yeah, we can, we can get you taken care of. We just need a couple of little things.
You're not 65, Sam.
I know, we have to check your ID. I don't believe you.
I'll just charge extra for him.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have another question. It is not, it's kind of related, but not related. And so while we're talking about services, the recycling center, I know the citizens always ask me about that, and we've talked about it several times, so if you can give us an update while you're at the microphone.
So we're still waiting for some of the information to get back from a couple of agencies, and so hopefully by the first of, first part of August, that we'll be turning dirt, but there's just been a few delays in some of the review process, not on the cities in, but hopefully we're getting past that. And so it is a five-Mond Day month here in July, so it'll be a little over two weeks before we're back here, but hopefully I'll have an update on that. And the recycling center is being markedly funded by parts of this sanitation fund, so we're trying to do a lot of things, and hopefully within 18 months, we'll have that up and running, and it'll be a new option for citizens for recycling. And not just the city of Douglasville, South Paulding, all of Douglas County. You're not going to care who comes.
Right.
We want to feed that monster.
That's right. I think we're all really excited about that. Thank you for that update as well.
Yes.
Any more questions on rates?
Nope.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. We can take that up again on Monday. Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for Finance.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking that committee for us, Madam Chairman. So we do not have business under the Housing and Community Affairs Committee, nor Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, so we'll move on and ask the Mayor Pro Tem to please take Personnel and Organization Committee, which is item number nine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items under Personnel and Organization Committee.
You're welcome.
And we'll start off with the first item, which is Adopt an Ordinance Effective July 16th, 2024 to amend the retirement plan for elected officials of the city of Douglasville, Georgia. Mr. Dr. Brian Westfield will give us some information on that.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Brian Westfield, 6695 Church Street. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
This amendment was discussed earlier this year at GMA. If this is approved, this will increase the elected official's benefit multiplier from $67 per year to $100 per year served. If this is approved and adopted, the effective date will be the date that it is approved by this body. That's all I have currently. I wasn't sure if Ms. Hampton wanted to add anything, or Ms. Callen?
I don't. This is one of the things you all asked about earlier in the calendar year, so this puts you somewhere in the middle range amongst your peer cities, so moving from the $67 to $100. I think the highest we researched was $150.
You know, we all got in it for their retirement plans. Are there any questions or comments from the council? All right, well, then we'll just move on from there and go to the next item, which is Adopt a Resolution to Establish a New Minimum Wage Amount for City Employees and to Amend the Pay Scale. Dr. Westfield?
Yeah, so for this item, what we did is we took the pay scale and applied 10% to the entire pay scale. If we had an individual who was below that new minimum, we're going to automatically move them up. If they're at it or above it, they stay the same. So what we're looking at is a new minimum pay grade here at the city of Douglasville, $19.25. Just some analysis that we did, we will have about 150 employees impacted. We looked at similar agencies, City of Rome, we looked at the county, we looked at Marietta. We're not leading the pack, but we're not lagging. We're not leading the pack, but we're not lagging the pack. So, it puts us in a competitive spot. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions or comments from Mayor or Council? This is an across-the-board adjustment for minimum wage in all positions, all positions.
That is correct, sir. Pay grade one oh seven up to one twenty-seven.
And where does this put us in terms of competitiveness with other cities, do we know?
I, I think this puts us in the higher tier, but not in a tier that is higher than some of the other metro communities. We've done this before where we've made some adjustments prior to your pay study that you're going to commence, you are going to commence the pay study earlier this year. So, this helps to cover a portion of what we expect that they're going to present to us, which is an increase in minimum wage. So, you will have handled that in this fiscal year's budget in preparation for what we may need to do as it relates to compression issues.
Okay. Against the jumper. And that is, that's a very active topic on compression. A lot of folks in the middle really do get hammered pretty badly. And it, as everybody knows, it's an incredibly competitive environment out there to get people, especially at entry-level positions, so we've got to keep up. All right, well, thank you for that one. No other questions? Samuel, six-four?
No, I'm fine. McDowell, he's raised theirs up, so it's time. Thank you.
Last item under Personnel and Organization is to adopt an ordinance to amend the personnel policies and procedures, Sections five dash one-two regarding employee merit pay increases, Section seven dash two regarding periodic employee evaluations, Section nine dash seven regarding employee tuition assistance, and Section eleven dash seven, payment for unusual, unused, not unusual, unused annual leave. Or if we want to add unusual annual leave in there as well, that would be fine.
Okay. Thank you for that, sir. So, I'm going to kind of take this in pieces, whereas the merit and annual evaluations are kind of tied together. So, what happened in two thousand twenty-three, we changed the performance evaluation system to incorporate certain things, goals, discipline, mandatory training. These three ratings are now used to determine merit. The PPP did not really address this as it related to merit. So, this change kind of aligns the merit program with the evaluations. A summary of the changes are, our current evaluation system now goes from January first to the thirty-first of December of each year. In order to receive merit, an employee must have received an annual performance evaluation. So, this kind of aligns the merit in the evaluation process. This is somewhat different from what we used to do. The months were different. The merit policy was somewhat different. Subject to your questions, that's all I have on this.
Comments, questions from Mayor or Council? I think these are pretty self-explanatory. Staff, any, any other, any other comments from staff? Okay. Dr. Westfield, as usual, you've covered the items very well. We appreciate that.
He's going to do, or you're going to do the...
Yeah, I have, I have two more, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had, I thought you got the last one there. My apologies.
Oh, no problem, sir. The next item is the Employee Tuition Assistance Program. So, for this particular program, this amendment would reinstitute it for the city beginning this fiscal year. This policy has been revised, and the major points are, number one, any course that an employee takes must be directly related to their employee's job here at the city. No, you cannot be paid out for any course higher than a bachelor's degree. Third, only courses which are provided by the University System of Georgia, accredited schools, or Technical College System of Georgia are eligible for the program. No private colleges will be allowed. And then lastly, the program does not cover transportation expenses, parking, lodging, things of that nature. In the instance that a employee uses tuition assistance and leaves, there are recruitment policies. So, if an employee uses tuition reimbursement and decides to leave, they are required to repay that amount. And by this policy, we can now extract that amount from their final paycheck when they're leaving the city. If they are not getting a payout, then there's other means where we will work with finance and the staff attorney to take it to collections if necessary. Subject to your questions, that's all I have on tuition assistance.
Questions or comments, Madam Mayor?
I did have a question. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Dr. Westfield is there. I know you have the provisions in here about an employee that may leave. Is there a timeframe, for example, two years? Or I know with the police department, there is a timeframe after they've completed the academy that they can't leave the department for a certain amount of time. Is there a commitment like that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, there has to be a year between the time they took the course before they leave. If they leave within that year, that's when we would pursue recruitment.
They have to pay back. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I apologize. I didn't see it in here when I was reading it. Thank you, Dr. Westfield. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor? All right.
One more item, so I'll just press on if there's no questions. So, this last amendment for payment of unused annual leave is really addressing individuals who leave under not-so-great circumstances. So, our policy currently states that you have to give, you have to give a fourteen-day notice before you receive a vacation payout. The problem lined with individuals who were involuntary separated. We received a lot of questions about eligibility for their vacation payout. For the good of the, the room, vacation is a benefit. So, in order to pay out, they must, they must leave in good standing. So, this amendment will really just align the dismissals or discharges for misconduct, things of that nature, to kind of be more definitive where the employee will have to understand they are not eligible for a payout under those circumstances. So, this amendment will point back to Section eight dash six, which talks about dismissals or discharges for misconduct. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Mayor or Council, anybody? Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'm Dr. Westfield. Now, there is something in it, I'm not, I'm not picking on the police department, but I know that a lot of the police officers who have been here long-term, which we're blessed to have them, if they've accrued a lot of leave, there's, it says four hundred hours, that they can be paid out for four hundred hours. So, if it's beyond that, do they, they should hurry up and take the leave before the four hundred hours if they plan on retiring and they have all of this leave because of overtime and all of that?
Yeah, so different circumstances. So, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief, I'll use you.
Deputy Chief, you want to?
If Deputy Chief has four hundred hours and he chooses to retire, he can, he can go. But if Deputy Chief messes up really, really bad, and, you know, he gets terminated for cause...
He won't do that.
The four hundred hours goes away.
It's nullified, it just, okay.
Goes away.
Watch yourself, Deputy Chief.
I'm not jinxing you, Deputy Chief.
No, we're not, we're not picking on the chief. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions? Anything else, Dr. Westfield?
That is all I have, sir.
Okay, as I said before, we still appreciate what, what you've done for us here. Without any other questions or comments, that, that is all we have under the Personnel and Organization Committee at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for taking that committee. And Dr. Westfield, we appreciate you helping us out with the HR Department Director.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
You're welcome. We'll move on then to item number ten, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have a couple of items this evening. The first is item number twenty-four dash one-nine-four. That is tabled from June twenty, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Says to hold a public hearing and consider a proposed ordinance to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to allow for front and rear attached garage placement on residential structures in the R five Single Family Cottage Residential District. And Ms. Shayla Reed is going to go over this item with us.
Thank you. Good evening, Shayla Reed, Community Development Director, six-six-nine-five Church Street. As you may recall, this item came before you all last month. And during that time, there was a request that we take the application or take the information and revise it so that we can have the combination of rear-front yard as well, well, rear yard as well as rear yard. Am I saying this twice? Front yard and rear yard. Garages as a calculation. And so, you'll see before you that the rear yard shall be no less than sixty percent, and then the front yard shall be no more than forty percent for the garages. And then, of course, the original amendment would have had for us to allow for front yard because the original code for cottages only allow for the rear yard, garages. So, that's what we have before you tonight.
Okay. At this time, I guess without having quorum, do we move forward and go ahead and do this? Ms. Jordan, can you help me with that? Does that mean that we just have two public hearings?
Since this particular item and the next item, I'd be, have already had public hearings. We do not have to. The reason for the language still being on here of hold a public hearing is just because it was tabled.
Thank you. If only I could read. Okay. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you so much. All right, guys. And I know that we're just going to get to have this conversation all over again on Monday, but I know that we had asked Ms. Reed to come up with a couple of solutions and ideas for us and how we wanted to move forward. And I know some of the, we had talked about possibly even looking at the sixty, forty, like you had said. I think I'm looking for some guidance from you guys as well on, on what you all think. Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, I know you've got some, some ideas for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I think the sixty percent is a good compromise. Actually, I'm, I'm fine with that. That's reasonable, understanding that, you know, that some, some areas or, or plots of land might not be capable of being turned into alleyways and so forth, so I find that... I actually caught a couple things, and I apologize for not having caught this up earlier because it's not in red, so I'm assuming it was already in the ordinance under design standards. But we have under item four A, which requires dwelling units to have a minimum of six and twelve roof pitch. Is there any rationale behind that? Because that seems to be a bit of a design decision, requiring a roof, pitched roofs for cottages in this category.
So, I don't have an answer for that. I'm not certain as to why that was chosen for twenty nineteen, but I can do the research and find that out for you before Monday.
I mean, I'll just say upfront, I'm a little bothered by, you know, requiring us to have, requiring developers to put pitched roofs on houses. I mean, that's not, I mean, that's a particular style, which is fine, but I don't know that we should be making decisions on style.
Yes, sir.
And then the other one is under four H, which also has exterior, exterior building materials shall be brick, stone, or wood. Again, that's a, those are design decisions that we're making for people, and I think that we may want to consider other materials.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I can interject for just a moment, I believe that that was a conversation that we had as a council, and we decided that these were some design standards that we wanted to implement to just have something to base off of. If there's something that needs to be changed moving down the road, that's fine. But that was a standard that, if I recall correctly, that we came up together.
We wanted the brick, stone, or wood. We didn't want to have cement with siding or materials that kind of elevate the product.
And I may be misremembering, but I thought we had, there were, there were materials that we had excluded but not included. I think that we had said, like you were pointing, I remember, that we don't want vinyl siding. We don't want certain type. That's, I thought this had been written, was going to be written so that we excluded, but not say, okay, here's your palette, work with it.
I'm understanding this to be some options and percentages.
Okay, but that doesn't show that on, on the ordinance. It just simply says, shall be. So, we may want to, I'm, I'm not trying to open up a can of worms here, as I often quite do, I know to do, but...
We want it to be brick, stone, or wood.
And those are all good materials. But there are some other materials out there that are good too, and so I think we may want to, I don't know.
Well, then we can talk about adding something to that list, and I'm fine with that as well.
Open up a conversation on that. It doesn't have to be under this context, I agree, but...
Okay. Well, we'll...
Bring that back under its own.
For this reason, then, okay.
Along with the pitched roofs.
I think I'm just looking for, and I think Ms. Reed is looking for our, our direction on moving forward with the sixty, forty. And I think that I'm comfortable with that. I like that we're keeping in line with what we had decided as a body that we were going to do, and yet, you know, leaving some leeway for some, for some changes down the road as well. Okay. And I know that we're going to have to have the conversation, like I said, all over again on Monday, but I'm good with the sixty, forty. And I really appreciate all of your time invested in that as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, friends. Are we ready? Our next agenda item is twenty-four dash one-nine-three. That is also tabled from June seventeenth of two thousand twenty-four, and that was to hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from R two Single Family Residential Detached to R five Single Family Cottage Residential District for thirty-three point two-six acres located in the intersection of Campbellton Street and I twenty and Land Lot twenty-two, District one, Section five. Parcel ID zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-one-four. Zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-one-five. Zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-one-six. Zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-one-eight. Zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-seven-six. Zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-seven-seven. Zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-eight-eight. Zero-zero-two-two zero-one-five C zero-eight-nine. And Land Lot twenty-three, District one, Section five, parcel ID zero-zero-two-three zero-one-five zero-zero-two-four. Application by Treton Homes, and Ms. Shayla Reed is here to go over this item with us as well.
Yes, ma'am. The applicant requested to have this item tabled from the last time. As a reminder, this is a proposed single-family detached development that will be proposed and have a rezoning from R two to R five. Considering what the comprehensive plan aligns and what it entails for this particular site, it does not allow for high density. It does have a medium-density future lane use for the site. The planning commission recommended denial of this when it was heard at their, their time. So, with that, staff has any, if there's any questions, I'm available for that.
Okay. And I know some of our concerns before were the, the traffic for one, and of course, you know, some of the garage placements. Has anything changed from then, from that last time that we looked at this item until now?
No, ma'am. Nothing has changed from then. But we, we, we did give a recommendation of considering what the planning commission said and what the comprehensive plan says with there being medium-density. Staff is saying that R three is the highest level of medium-density that's allowed for that area.
Okay. And medium-density to me being R two to R three?
R three.
Medium-density being R two and R three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Council, did you guys have any questions, or Madam Mayor?
I do. I have a couple of, and this is just a general question. I guess it's for legal. So, Ms. Jordan, our staff attorney, is saying that we, although it says, hold a public hearing, that we're not holding a public hearing because we have already held the public hearing before it was tabled last month.
Yes, that's correct, but at the discretion of the chair, it would be appropriate to allow individuals to speak if they are here for that item. That would be at the chair's discretion.
Yes, ma'am. So, that's what, and it's up to you, of course, as a chair. I don't want to preclude the public for having an opportunity because we did say sixty, forty for the garages, front and rear, when that wasn't in the first item. And then now this one, we're saying it goes from R five to R three, so it is a little bit of a change.
No, I think that's a wonderful idea. But before we get to them, do you have any more questions, though, for Ms. Reed?
No, I don't. I just, that was a general question that I had.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Mayor Pro Tem, did you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, with that being said, I think Madam Mayor is on to something, and I think that we should have a public hearing. So, if we have anyone here who would like to speak on this item, and I see Mr. Fowler running up here so fast. Mr. Fowler, if you'll please just give us your, your name and address for the record.
Joe Fowler, Post Office, Mark's Forty-Nine Douglasville. I'm here on behalf of Treton Homes. It's pretty clear that the R five is not going to accommodate. It will be revised in such a way that at least what we currently plan won't work. And what we request is that you leave it on the table so that we can seek to comply with the ordinance, as it appears that you will revise it. We've been looking at that. We got the percentages, and thank you, Shayla. We got the percentages yesterday. We immediately started working, trying to determine if we can revise it accordingly to deal with the split that you've recommended. We can have that done by Monday. We ask you to... We can have that done by Monday. We ask you to leave it on the table. We understand where this may be going, and that is, we may not be able to do it at all as we originally devised it. We know we can't do it as originally devised it. If you change the R5 as you've directed, that would put an end to it. If we can revise it to comply, we may know that by Monday, but we doubt we will. We are going to ask you to leave it on the table.
Okay.
And then it may be that if we just can't revise it to comply with the ordinance as you ultimately adopt it.
Okay.
Then we would go back to something like R2 or R3, and that's going to take us at least two or three weeks.
Okay. So, Mr. Fowler, I know that we'll have to actually vote on that on Monday, but if I was just sitting here looking at a calendar, thinking, the first round of meetings would be August fifth, that Monday, and then that second round would be August nineteenth.
We just ask you to leave it on the table so that we can do what we can to comply.
Okay.
Thank you.
Attorney Fowler, I have a question, Madam Chair, can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Attorney Fowler, so you're saying, the way it currently is, because we're looking at the medium-density being R3, that you would need to have an opportunity, you just received that information yesterday, and you would need more time to try to see if Treighton Homes could make that recommendation work?
It's a step actually farther back than that. We're going to try to, well, first off, we ask you to leave the ordinance the way it was originally published with no percentages. That would work for us, but we know there's extraordinary opposition to that. And the council appears to be moving toward the sixty forty split. We may be able to comply with that, but we won't know before Monday.
Yes, sir.
Right.
And if sometime after that, we know we've got to go to an R2 or R3, we don't want you to turn us down and block us from coming back for something that may need a rezoning that would be consistent with R2 or R3, more in keeping with what the neighbors want.
Okay.
And we'll tell you this, since the last meeting, we did consult with the DOT, hired engineers, did a lot of work to see what could be done, the intersection with Elizabeth and Campbellton, and had some good feedback from both the county and some on the city side. So the request is, don't change the R5 from what was published. Looks like you're going to change it to leave a percentage. We're going to try to comply with that, but if we can't, please leave it on the table so that we can do something to make a residential use of this site that would be more in keeping with what the city sees from a long-term perspective. Thank you.
Better understanding. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. And, which, we can cross this bridge on Monday, but it looks like, I think we do have to put some kind of date on there. So, but we can, Mr. Fowler, if you guys can think of that before Monday, I think we will have to put some kind of date on it for when we remove it from the table. But you don't have to be ready to answer that right now, either. We can, I think, is that okay, Miranda? Ms. Jordan?
We will need to set that date by Monday. We just can't leave it open ended.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch with Sheila.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fowler.
And since we have all of our residents out, if there's anyone here, though, who would like to speak for or against this item, I think I see.
Good evening. Is that a for or against? It doesn't matter which at this moment.
Just come talk to us.
Councilmen apps.
The council. Those of you that are here tonight, I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the opportunity for us to be here.
Yes.
Mark Adams, sixty-four hundred Elizabeth Drive, Douglasville. I just had a couple of questions of clarity concerning this item. I think we may have asked, but just did not have any answer. And we may now have an answer. I would hope that Ms. Reed would now have an answer for us. Two things, and I'll only take a moment, and this is new information. I'm just curious if there are any residents thus far that have spoken out or have approached the council or mayor that are actually in favor of this as it is presented. That's my one question. Secondly, I really didn't get a clear answer about who is actually responsible for the intersection improvements at Campbellton Street and Elizabeth Drive, at our street, the street that we reside on now and that we know would be heavily impacted by a development like this. I'm just curious if there is an answer back from the state, whether there would be DOT involvement from the state level, whether it would be a county DOT issue, or whether the city, you all will be making the decision concerning that improvement in that area. That's all I had. Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
By the way, Mr. Miller, I was a little surprised that you would not want to, this is in love that I say this, I will come back during citizen comments, that you would be wanting to give more leeway rather than have stringent standards. I was surprised at that, sir.
Thank you.
Let me answer the questions.
Follow-up, so not to take up the time of the residents.
Okay, thank you. Someone will respond to Mr. Adams. Thank you.
We know where to find him.
Franklin, eighty-nine twenty-five Orchard Drive, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh one three four. And I've lived in that area over twenty-five years, visited it my whole life. And the traffic is more of an issue than just some consultation, and I think that that is something that needs to be addressed. As I understand the ordinance is, if this had been ninety units, they would have been required to do a detailed study, and there's, I don't know, ten or fifteen guidelines that they have to address. And if you look at this roadway and what's there, we have eighty-three units. We have an activity center with tennis courts and swimming pool, and you have a one-way exit coming out of there right at the entrance ramp to I-20. There's some complication, and it is so close to the ninety-unit number, I think that you should consider, before you ever look at whatever they rework, it should be a detailed study of the traffic. Some examples are, when you are going north on Campbellton from I-20, there is frequently a line of cars, there's room for six cars to turn left right now into Elizabeth. The proposed changes they were talking about related to leaving Elizabeth or the entrance into Elizabeth, not the intersection where you make the turn. There's six cars that can line up and turn there, and you're going to increase the traffic drastically. Not only that, one of the problems with that intersection, I don't know if it's just, or lack, for, the most polite way I can put it is crazy drivers. I go to that intersection regularly to get to my home, and I see cars going north on Campbellton consistently make a U-turn, which is not convenient for traffic in general, but it happens. And then I watch them, as I'm turning into Elizabeth, go back to the I-20 entrance ramp. So what's happened is, crossing I-20, you have cars that come north, and they will back up also, making a left onto the westbound lane of I-20. And so cars will bypass them, and they'll come to that red light at Elizabeth and make U-turns. There are some people that just make U-turns and cross right back over I-20, and I can't ever figure out why, but it happens on a regular basis. Furthermore, when you come out of Hospital Drive and you make, and you're heading west and you turn south on Campbellton, those cars have a fairly tight two-lane turn. And I have been in the intersection at Elizabeth, stopped at the red light, and if I pull close to the lanes, cars will actually swerve into the right-hand turn lane. There are a lot of complications there. I wish I had been more involved when the Freedom Island was built. It's a project I know y'all are all proud of, but there should have been a roundabout put in that area. And then a lot of what we're talking about, a lot of what I've seen, would not be a problem. I've studied a lot about roundabouts because of what my father worked on a lot. And because of that, I've seen a lot of engineering and how different kinds of intersections have worked. I tried to get the county to change the intersection where the west, Northwest Georgia Tech and the Baptist Church, when they did that. They should have put in roundabouts there. And they didn't. But here, there is no roundabout, and quite frankly, the way everything has been designed, I don't believe you can do it without taking a lot of property, because you have so much traffic and lanes that are crammed in there between the Presbyterian Church and the entrance to I-20. And if you don't mandate a study, you're going to create a horrible situation there without some kind of engineering reworking of the whole area. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wynn. Was there anyone else here this evening who would like to speak on this item? If you'll just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Lamazalas. I reside at sixty-three seventy-two Allison Court, and I'm right here in the corner of Campbellton and the I-20 West ramp, where this proposed development would go. So it would run to one side of my house and then behind my house, or my property, excuse me, my property. And so I appreciate the conversation that I've heard tonight. And what I'd like to add to it, in addition to any traffic concerns, would also be just the visual appeal. So when we think about our county, and as you are coming into Douglas County, and the exit ramps that we have, and just the view from the interstate, so what the general public sees and may think of the county, the city, as they travel through our interstate system, Chapel Hill is sort of one of your main, you know, it's a main thoroughfare. This is where the shopping is. This is where a lot of businesses reside. And as far as the city, I feel like what is special about the neighborhood that we have right now is that this is your original, kind of, your city homes. So they're on larger lots. They have character. These are not cookie-cutter homes. And the development that has been proposed is kind of a series of, you know, really closely built, I don't want to say faceless homes and sound offensive, but, you know, you have just a few plans, and it switches, and that's what it is. And for the city, when you see that this has exposure, major exposure to the interstate, that your view from the interstate and your view from Campbellton, as you're getting off the exit at Chapel Hill and Campbellton, what you're seeing as you're coming into our city, I'm all in favor for, let's make it nice, and we want it to look lovely, and inviting. But what is in keeping with what the city currently holds? And so I appreciate that you guys are looking at going from R5, that that's a little too much density for this area, because it, once you cross the interstate, we come into a residential area that I think is appealing, because it does have character. And they are, you know, you have a sought-after downtown area that is now a livable, walkable area. What we have with the amphitheater is amazing. This place at Christmas looked like a Hallmark movie in the city. So you all should be proud of all the things that we've done to create an environment around the downtown living and what that's like. So as we consider moving forward, what goes on that parcel of land, I'm all in favor of them being able to capitalize on that piece of land and building something. But I love the idea that I've heard of, let's keep it kind of in character and keeping, and even enhance sort of what you're seeing as you're getting off, because once those trees are gone and homes are built, that's forever the stamp of what this looks like in kind of the essence of our city. So what we've kept in years past is to kind of preserve the appeal and just the character of our city. And so I would love to just see that continue to be supported. And I appreciate that you guys are willing to listen to everyone and kind of think through this. Obviously, traffic, obviously, as a resident, just security of, once all of those trees are gone, and our neighborhood is fully exposed to Campbellton and twenty at that point, and the future homeowners of these, of this development. So just giving thought to what that visually is going to look like and how that will impact just the perspective of the city. So that's really all I have to offer. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lamazalas. Guys, did we have anyone else here this evening who would like to speak on this item? Okay. With that being said, guys, we're going to go ahead and close out this public hearing. And on Monday, we will look at the dates for re-tableing this item. Okay. Thank you all so much for that. Our next item is Item twenty-four dash two two eight. That is to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section five point zero four to reduce the minimum front yard setback from thirty feet to thirteen feet, to allow a building additional, a building addition to be placed in the front yard setback on a landlot of point five two three acres at seven six one five, Granite Drive and Land Lot one ninety, District Two, Section Five, Parcel ID zero one nine zero zero two five zero zero seven nine. Application by J.J.M. Holdings. And Ms. Sheila Reed is here to go over this item with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The applicant is asking for a front yard setback. They're looking to add more square footage to an existing structure for the reasoning of storage. This is an HVAC company, and they are looking to allow for there to be a reduction from thirty feet to thirteen feet. And so that's pretty much what the request is asking for. This is primarily an industrial area, and so primarily what goes on back there is mainly usually just deliveries in that area. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I know when we went over this earlier, you did tell me that it's already been through the inspection of the police and fire department to determine that this was safe. The only other question I came up with between now and then is, as far as the aesthetics of it, I know that we have other businesses not like this, but where we maybe have had issues with, like, storage and that sort of thing. Is this anything that would cause a problem as far as our code goes with the look of this?
No, ma'am. So this is all internal storage. So if, from the outside, it will look as if it's just a regular structure. The expansion probably wouldn't even be obvious, of course, during construction, but not afterwards. It would just look as if it's just one large structure that's been that way since the beginning.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Counsel, did you guys have any questions? Ms. Sheila Reed? No? Okay. This is a public hearing. And I know that we, Ms. Jordan, we have to do it again on Monday, though, but it's advertised, right? So we still go ahead and do it today?
We would just have to hold the public hearing this evening, and then you would take it up for consideration on Monday.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you. With that being said, then, guys, this is a public hearing. So if we have anyone here this evening who would like to speak on this item, if you'll please come on down, give your name and address for the record. I apologize. It looks like you guys might be the applicant. Did I overlook you guys?
He's the applicant, Mike Forlaw, Baldwin Parkway, Douglasville, Georgia. This site is in McKay Industrial Park, just over that way. It's an HVAC company, and we are proposing approximately a forty by forty expansion. It's kind of on a corner lot, so it has a lot of front setback. We're not asking to reduce the front setback to thirteen feet just across the board, just to get this forty by forty in. So you asked about storage, and this would actually improve that right now, because it would take outside storage and it'd put it inside. So I think it would look better if you approved the request and allowed us to proceed. It's simply storage. We're not proposing any additional demand to utilities or parking or anything like that. So I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. No?
Is there any questions, if you have any?
I think those were my only questions. Counsel, did you have any questions of the applicant? Madam Mayor?
I had a quick question. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in and explaining to us. I went by today, and you couldn't put it in the back.
No, ma'am.
No, it does.
The line is there. Can you see what it looks like, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It will look nice to have everything. I'm glad to hear that you would put everything that's outside on the inside. But, yes, sir. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Absolutely. Did we have anyone here this evening who would like to speak on this item? If not, we're going to go ahead and close out this public hearing, and we will take this item up on Monday. Moving along, our next item is Item twenty-four dash two three six, and that is to consider a request for final replat approval for the purpose of establishing the as-built locations of the townhome buildings for lots forty-four through forty-eight, one forty-seven through one fifty-two, and one fifty-three through one fifty-eight of Laura Wood Phase Two for twelve point zero one eight acres at five zero five nine Reservoir Drive and Land Lots twenty-three and twenty-four in District One, Section Five, application by F.R. Arborplace LLC. And Mr. James Gordon is here to answer any questions that we may have about this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm James Gordon, six six nine five Church Street. And this subdivision of townhomes now has three more buildings that are being completed. And this is giving the as-build... And this is giving the as-build location of where those units are so that they can move forward and go to closing. And I'm open to questions.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is the, pretty much the same thing that we did for the last phase that they got ready.
Correct, correct. This is, this is simply three more townhome units that, um, townhome buildings of several units that is nearing completion, similar to what has come before you before.
Got it. Thank you. Counsel, did you have any questions of Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, I, I did want to follow up and this may or may not be related. Did we, are we prepared yet at this time to address the issues that some of our residents had regarding the borderline between the development and our station?
The issue that was brought up by the resident, now that I've gotten clarification from staff, is confusion behind what was said at a community meeting when city staff was holding a community meeting versus what was actually voted upon via council. So part of the reason why I wanted Ms. Jordan to take a look at what I send out in writing was because I think that the information that the resident is relying upon is in that community meeting rather than what is actually written in document and special stipulations that were voted on by you. And because that is a legal document, I would rather hold true to what you all voted on versus commit to something that was not. What we are doing is working with developer, Mr. Thompson, our engineer, is working with the developer to see if there would be something that we can do, working with them to help to satisfy those concerns. But it is a, it's a situation where we have to be very careful because there is a conflict between what is assumed versus what is actually written and approved.
What you're saying very politely is that we may, we, the council may have dropped the ball on following through.
Not necessarily dropped the ball. I mean, I, I think it's indicative of why we mentioned back then that we should not be having those, well, we as the city should not be hosting those community meetings because now we have a resident relying upon what was said at that meeting and that was not a city meeting. It was not a public hearing. So therefore, you have information that's being relied upon at that level, which if it's not codified and, and what has been adopted, it's not really much we can go upon and it's not much that we can enforce. So if it seems as if I'm delaying, I'm being careful.
That's your job. You're doing your job very well. So there are some, but we will, we'll continue the discussion with them, with the developers to find a way that will at least ameliorate some of the concerns of the residents on that street.
Absolutely. We will do our best.
Okay. So there's, it's not, it's not a done, it's not a done deal per se yet. I mean, we still have, we still have things we can do.
Absolutely. And what we don't want to do is get involved either in a civil, that, something that may turn out to be a civil matter.
And we don't want to, and we also certainly don't want to overpromise.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hampton.
You're welcome.
For that update.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Are we, guys, are we good with this then? Counsel? Okay, wonderful. Mr. Gordon, thank you so much for going over this item with us.
Thank you.
Take it up again on Monday. Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much. That was a lot. To all, we appreciate the feedback and the conversation. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We'll move on. We do not have any business under Public Improvement and Beautification nor Public Relations Committee, but we do have business under Public Safety Committee. I'll ask Councilmember Davis if you would please take item thirteen, which is Public Safety Committee, please.
Yes, ma'am. I would love to.
Thank you.
Okay. Item A, we will authorize the mayor to sign a service contract for public safety. Youth Program between Youth Against Violence, INC. and the City of Douglasville. Ms. Jewel, how are you?
Good evening. My name is Tammy Jewel, Douglasville Police Department, two-zero-eight-three Faber Road, Douglasville, three-zero-one-three-five. This is simply renewal of the, we have an existing service contract between the City of Douglasville and Youth Against Violence, which is now five-zero-one-two-three. And so this is renewing that contract. The, the difference is this will be a three-year.
Excuse me, can you speak up just a little more?
I'm sorry.
There we go.
You can hear me now? Sorry.
Yes.
So we have an existing contract. It's one year. And this contract will be a three-year contract. And any questions? You're welcome to ask. Okay.
Madam Mayor and Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I had, something I had asked about previously and I don't know that anybody's acted upon this, but I think this is basically our contract for Youth Against Violence with the police department and establishing.
Yes, sir.
One thing that I had suggested, and I'd like to see a follow-up possibly, is that we, the council, recognize these students who graduate from this program in some formal way. I mean, this, this is a remarkable program. It's nationally recognized and is a success. These kids work hard to get through this and I think we, we owe it to them to recognize them in some way. And I'm happy to, to suggest the council give them a proclamation or something each, for each graduating class. I mean, we, we recognize people come through, you know, the, several other programs that we have for internships in the city. These are kids who haven't had a lot go right in their lives.
Yes, sir.
And I think it would mean something that we, as a council, recognize what they've accomplished. And so I'd like to see that formalized somehow if we can.
We have a, each session has a graduation ceremony at the end of the program and we have a date usually set for that. We can notify council if you would like to be a part of this ceremony or?
I would love to bring them in here, in, in the council chambers and let them be recognized in pub. I mean, what, what, that graduation is fantastic. That's good. That's right of passage and so forth. But having them recognized in public, in front of council, in front of an audience, I think would, I think that would bring a lot of meaning to some of these kids' lives. I think that would, how many, how many chances do they get to have that?
Not many.
Let's do that. Can we?
Yeah, we can talk to the chief and see. And I've attended several graduations. So we'll just see how. It's usually on a Saturday and we'll just have to arrange and see how the chief, if we can marry that, the request and, and the actuality of their graduation coming on council day, Monday or Thursday for that to happen.
I'll take it to the chief. Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, I did ask the chief about that. The issue is getting the students all together at the same time for a council meeting. So I think you all will have to go to them.
Whatever it takes, I guess.
And they're, they're very happy.
It's going to be very difficult for the students to come here. I think we're, if you want to do that, we're going to have to travel to recognize them there.
Yeah, we probably have to go there because once they disperse, it's probably a little hard to get them all back together. But we probably have to go there to attend it and open it up.
We can arrange Ubers, can't we?
Yeah, and it's a great, it's a great ceremony. It's really nice to graduate.
Yes, we have a ceremony in here. And, and that's fifteen thousand per physical year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other questions?
It's just codifies what we talked about to have, to support Youth Against Violence.
Okay. All right, Madam Mayor, we'll move on. And then we just had us back on the agenda for Monday.
Yes, sir.
And item B, consider a request for the change in agent outlet manager and transfer of alcoholic beverages license to the retail pack and sell of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment. Current license, American Express Mark, INC., DBA American Mark, proposed license one-one-zero-four Thornton LLC, DBA AG Food Mark, proposed agent outlet manager Iran Shikaya. The required fees have been paid to the finance department, Iran Shikaya. Can you come on down? I hope I pronounced your name.
Imran.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Imran Sheikh. That's eleven-zero-four Thornton Road, Lithia Springs, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
And your, and your location is where? Give it an address.
Eleven-zero-four Thornton Road, Lithia Springs, Georgia.
And how long you been there?
That location? We just acquired the location.
And just speak up just a little more.
We, we just acquired the location, May twenty-fourth.
So it's a new location?
Yes.
Okay, good. Welcome to the city. And, and you have alcohol and, and your employees? You have a training program for your employees?
Yes, sir.
And how you going to go about training your employees?
Usually, uh, like we partner with a company called VID. So, you know, they give us, uh, register signage, posters and some devices so we can verify the dates. And apart from that, it's part of our daily briefings as well to check on the IDs and have a proper visual verification to understand the difference between a fake ID and a real ID as well. And also, we have a program in our registers. So if you are ringing up or scanning an item which is related to alcohol, tobacco, it won't let you pass through unless you verify the person's age. So these are the basic things, uh, we implement with the new trainees and also, you know, rehiring, I mean, retraining the, the current expedience caches as well.
Have you, have you got an opening date? Are you already open and can you give the time out?
Uh, well, it all depends on you guys. Once we have all the licenses ready, we're going to have a proper opening day as well.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. So you're going to be the day-to-day agent outlet manager? Do you have any experience in operating or this is your first time having this opportunity?
No, I have like almost eight years' experience and I have managed four locations as well before this. So this is not the first one. So yeah, eight years' experience so far.
Okay, thank you. So you've had four locations before, but this is the first time at this particular location in Douglas? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other council members? Okay, well, we appreciate you. Like I said, welcome to the City of Douglasville and let us know the opening date and time and keep up the good work. Come back on Monday and we'll give you a decision, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. And we're going to item C, consider a request for alcoholic beverage license for the permanent sale and consumption of the spirited liquor at the following establishment. Proposed license, SMG Hospitality LLC, DBA Hadoon Eatery. Location eight-four-four-zero Courthouse Square. Proposed agent outlet manager, Michelle Hudson Perriman. And required fees have been paid to the finance department, Michelle Hudson Perriman. If you don't know, it's the Pink Palace.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
We're definitely here to request a full liquor license for a high noon, which has turned into-
And give me your name, excuse me, give me your name and all the particulars.
Eight-four-forty Courthouse Square, Douglasville, Georgia, three-zero-one-three-four.
Marcus Perriman, eighty-four-forty Courthouse Square East, Douglasville, Georgia, three-zero-one-three-four.
We are definitely here to request the full liquor license. We've been, since we've reopened, we've just become a destination spot. The building is all pink.
We've had over twenty thousand people come through the building since we opened in the three months that we had.
Well, I am so glad that you all went in another direction. Oh, everybody's so happy. And, uh, yeah, this is a renewal, right?
Yes, it is.
Actually, we're trying to have the full license.
They had a temporary.
They have temporary.
They had a temporary before based on the prior business.
Oh, okay. It was temporary.
Mr. Chair, this was, they, they have previously been granted a license for beer and wine sales and they're addition, they're adding a request now for the liquor sales. But this was a separate application and license for, from the previous establishment, Crew Lounge. So they were, they were not on a temporary. They, they, they had a full license for just beer and wine only. And they're looking now to add the spirited liquor.
Okay, so you can, so you can do the mimosas the right way, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So again, we have to ask these questions. How are you going about your training program and and hours of operations?
The hours of operation is Monday through Friday from nine AM to three PM, Saturday and Sunday, nine AM to five PM. And regarding the training program?
Well, right now, we have, uh, we've trained, we have managers that we've hired to run the establishment and they are trained in liquor sales and they all come with at least fifteen to twenty years' experience in hospitality.
Okay, good. It takes that. Here and now, great city. Okay, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much. I guess I was confused. I thought there was a temporary license from Crew and that you all had taken that establishment over and that you had that license for a temporary, a time. And now you're asking for a permanent one. But it's been cleared up by our staff attorney that you had just beer and wine and now you're with spirited liquor. So it's a separate license for that. Okay. Um, so that, and then I'll just, a sidebar question. With the facility being all pink, and I came over before you, it's beautiful. I like that pink. You have to get adjusted. You all are in the historic district. Was there a concern about that with the color? I know with, when you're in the historic district, you have to stick to going through the Historic Preservation Commission and stick to the colors of a certain palette. So how is that going and what happened?
It was approved.
It was approved to be pink. That's the historic color, pink.
We got, we got approved for the pink and, um, for the wall that you see inside the patio area.
Okay.
Who approved it?
I didn't know that. Right.
Was it approved?
Thank you. He said it was approved. Okay. I didn't know.
Historically, I didn't either.
I don't think they say anything about the interiors, but just the exterior.
That's the exterior. Okay.
My understanding, you recently got some publicity too, some free publicity from one of the TV stations?
Yes, we had Channel Five come out and they did a whole morning show about the restaurant.
That's pretty impressive.
Oh, good. You have a big butterfly or something. You can take pictures.
Yes, we spent, um, we spent money with artists that came in and did neon butterflies for us with a whole floor wall.
Yes.
Then we had some murals painted inside the building.
Very good, very good. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Counsel Miller? Okay. Well, continue and, and we will come back on Monday and we will give you a, that's okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Davis. I appreciate you taking that committee for me. Our next items, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, Recreation, Culture and Tourism, Technology Committee and Transportation Committee, do not have any business to present this evening. So we'll move on to item seventeen, which is other business. Um, is there any other business to come before council from the elected officials? Okay, I don't see any. We'll move on then to item eighteen, updates from our city staff. Our city staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our police department deputy chief.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a staff report and I'll ask council member Nicole Miller to please take this item, our staff report, under Planning and Development Committee. You're welcome.
Our staff report this evening says it's a report concerning a development plan for Homewood Suites for one-point-nine-eight acres located at seven-seven-seven Bob Arnold Boulevard and Land Lot six-seven-eight, District Eighteen, Section Two, parcel ID zero-six-seven-eight-one-eight-two-zero-zero-one-one. And the application is by H Hotels and it looks like our very own Ms. Sheila Reed is going to go over this item with us.
Thank you. As mentioned, this is a hotel off of Blair's Bridge. Uh, this is a four-story structure with ninety-one units. I'm saying it incorrectly, not Blair's Bridge, I apologize, off of Thorn Road area. And so there is a four-story, ninety-one-unit structure. It has gone through the development review process. And from there, it has now been able to move forward for our LDP. So they're applying for that next. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you guys have questions regarding this information that you've heard so far? And, and that's just right there with all the other hotels, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It's next door to one, actually.
And the four stories is, would that need a variance? No? Okay. I, I'm sorry. I clearly, my caffeine has worn off for the day.
It'll be about the same height as the Courtyard Fairfield.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Well, thank you so much for that report, Ms. Reed.
So why is Mr. Pippin, why are they here if this meeting, if it meets all the requirements? We don't have a variance or anything.
You all decided that you wanted to see development plans?
It used to go to the Planning Commission.
You all used to, well, that was at one point, and then you started to approve development plans. And then your legal staff advised you that as long as the development plans met code, there was no reason for you all to approve or deny those plans. So, but you said you still wanted to see them. So this is us presenting them to you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I must, I was confused because I thought once it was, if it was okay, then we didn't need to see it. But it's keeping us abreast of what's going on. So if people ask us what's going on on that side of the street, then we know what it is.
All right. So what is the timeline on this? Do we know?
So they've submitted their development plan. So the next step will be their land disturbance permit. So they'll still go through the review process for the land disturbance permit. Of course, as you know, that is a review process that allows for us to see where the utilities will go, roads, et cetera. So that could take, you know, a little time for the development actually takes place until that takes place and no, no structures are being built until then. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all that we had this evening for staff reports.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Reed, and we appreciate the applicant, Mr. Pippin, coming in. Do we have any, we're at item number 20, comments from citizens and delegates. If we have any comments or concerns from citizens, if you sustain the meeting, you'd like to speak to us, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address myself and council members.
My name is Kelvin Harris, 6637 Copper Court.
Good evening, Mr. Harris.
How you doing, Mayor, Council? I'm very concerned about item number 24-204. Just the part that these fees going up, I know we have to go within time. But we have to take into consideration the senior citizens. You know, I came in front of this council member about six months fighting. And it seemed like didn't nobody know the codes until I sent them an email. As senior citizens that are 65 years older, they're having a hard time as it is now with groceries going up and everything is going up. But I don't hear y'all talking about the section where they can file exempt. That's something we have to be transparent when it comes to our seniors, because once again, we all gonna get old. And I think we need to be transparent. When we talked to this trash bill, I heard the director mention two contractors, GFL and Republic. Where myself, the vision, I have, all I see is the city of Douglasville trucks. And for that impact to hit people at once and wasn't notified, I think we need to be more transparent in letting people know that stuff is gonna go up. They appreciate it, and I will also appreciate it. Number two, the Youth Against Violence, Dr. Gary Sparks. I've been involved with that organization for 17 years. Some of y'all have came on Saturday for graduation. I have to say, the chief does an excellent job. We have a lot of these young people who have came to be successful business people. They come back, they give money, they give their time. That's a great organization. We just gotta be more involved in our youth. We gotta reach them before the streets reach them. But we also gotta have something for them to do. A lot of the companies now are trying to hire these teenagers where they can stay out the street. I applaud that. Those, the companies, need to be getting the benefits. Instead of these one, these companies that are getting a $1.2 billion contract and you giving them incentives. How about giving these, these companies incentive that hires the teenagers, try to keep them out of the street? I appreciate y'all and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from citizens and delegates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mehdi Al-Husaini. I live in the beautiful city of Douglasville, 2860 Legion Lake Road, Douglasville, 30235.
Yes, sir.
Almost a year ago, I came in front of you and I got your support to move about 115 acres in a subdivision called Brookmont. We moved it from the high-scale state section into another section called the Meadows. And the reason we did that, instead of Terry and Orecory requiring us to build 5,500 square feet, which in today's term, almost a million dollars home. So we moved it where we can build more affordable homes. I still have 64 lot at the state section. I built two houses and now asking to sell them for 250 and I cannot sell them. And this is one of the main reasons that we moved that into another section called the Meadows and the cottages. The challenge we have right now, that the city is requiring to have 25% brick in every side of the four sides of the house. And we are hoping, or we were hoping when we came here to build Besabon with HOA. Orecory and Raymond Kirson are requiring it over there. I have been told that I need to file for a variance. But the challenge with the variance, I'm, I'm, I'm a developer, I'm not a builder. I'm trying to develop them and build them. I already have them under contract with number one in America called D.R. Horton. And that D.R. Horton saying that we would be more than happy to apply for a variance when that has been developed. But right now, it's not developed yet. Number two, number two, the Besabon with the city asking, I have to pay $33,000 for the variance, and that's a lot for many reasons. Number one, I don't know how many lots we gonna have. All right, the 33,000 came from 217 lot, time 150 plus, plus, plus. So what I'm here in front of you, I would like really to propose the following. Number one, to be grandfathered, because this is not an independent subdivision. It's just a section of an existed subdivision that has over, you know, 600 lot. And if this is not acceptable to you, then I will propose to consider the whole development as one unit rather than as a hundred, as a 217 unit. And if this is not acceptable, then what about, for example, right, let me go ahead and, and look at it as one unit. And then when we go start building and applying for building permits, at that time, you can add 150 in addition to every building permit. And D.R. Horton has no problem with it. D.R. Horton, they don't want to shed 33,000, knowing that there is a possibility that it's not gonna be approved. I'm talking about the variance here. So again, to recap, I would love to have it to be, you know, grandfathered, and you already done that for them at the tributary subdivision. And they would like to see the same thing. And you know, tributary is a beautiful subdivision. And they're trying to do almost the same thing. They came and they met with the HOA board three, four times and they love the floor plans or the house plans. And Terry probably can help me with that, that they have to, they have to have a bricks anyway when it come to the water tables around the house. And that by itself is gonna be over 15%. But the other 10% that I'm struggling with them to have them to agreed, you know, on it or for it. So, and this is why I'm here, if you can help me please, either to grandfather it, right, or to look at it as one unit, talking about the whole development. And if this is not okay, then they have no problem that whenever they apply for the building permit, even to double the 150 to 300. Thank you very much.
So, thank you so much. Appreciate it. The staff will take everything into consideration and make a recommendation to myself and council members. Based on your request for grandfathering for the variance, but knowing that if you, we can't guarantee the vote of, for the variance until you apply. It's like the cart or the horse.
Yes, I have no problem with that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming forward. We appreciate that.
If I could remind staff, do not, do not communicate with me on that issue because as the design architect for Brookmont, I cannot make any comments publicly regarding that one way or the other. So just leave me out of that loop.
Absolutely. Ms. Jordan can address, I mean, to, to save our citizens some time. Ms. Jordan can address the grandfathering because that's a legal matter. And I do think there is an incorrect estimate on the application, in the application process for the variance. So as you all mentioned, as we discussed, I don't think the position changes that a variance should be applied for. But Ms. Jordan can address grandfathering.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Madam Chair, the subdivision of the villages of Brookmont is composed of many subdivisions that are located within it. The particular one that Mr. Mahdi is addressing is one that came before you all approximately a year ago for a change to the PUD. The whole subdivision as a whole is one planned unit development, and this was a section of it. This particular property, because of the redesignation under the PUD for density, that redesignation took it out of being able to be grandfathered. Because if there is a change in zoning to any particular parcel of land, then any designation previously that would have protected it under that greater PUD no longer exists. So unfortunately, the city would not be able to do a grandfathering. But if the developer would like to do a variance, then that application would be processed through staff with our Community Development Department.
And so the 30, the concern was the amount. So we're saying that there may be, the calculator may be off and it may be a different amount that was presented initially.
I suggested he sit down with Community Development to give a good estimate on what that application would be. I don't assume that that application would be $30,000. I don't think we have a $30,000 application that we've ever processed.
Okay. Understand.
Ms. Reed is in, in the back of the room. She will process that for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, staff. And just for Mr. Harris, for just a couple of points of clarity with the concern with the service, with the sanitation service. The companies don't pick the trash up. The, it's the roll-off who we pay after the city, city sanitation, public works picks our receptacles up. It's the companies, Republic and CFO, I think, GFL, that, that's their fee that they charge. And they went up in June, that was effective immediately in July, by 20% for commercial and 9% for residential. So that's why the calculators went up based on what was presented to the city. So you don't see Republic on your, when they come to get your, your receptacle. You see the City of Douglasville, but after it goes to the site, then that's who receives the resources. And for the citizens, it's going up from $10 a month to $10.90. So it's just a 90% increase. And I understand you're asking about an exemption. At this point, we're not able to provide an exemption because we have to pay for the service. But that could be something in the future if we make enough that we could maybe for hardship, have someone apply for an exemption. But of course, you see it's more than half of what regular citizens pay, $22. Citizens only pay 10, seniors pay 10, and now it'll be $10.90. So I don't know if that helps any, with any clarity. Yes, sir.
I've been looking for several, several times, and I only addressed what was in the code. Because like I said earlier, I brought it to y'all's attention that we have so many codes. There's over 300 codes. And I also stated that we need to go back and look at some of these codes. Some of them is outdated.
Yes, sir.
But once again, that's what's in the code. I specifically brought it to you, Mayor, and the councilman, and I printed it out. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So we gonna go by the codes? If we don't revise or update them, that's a problem. That's all I'm trying to do.
Yes, sir.
Make sure everybody is transparent. And these codes, it's the citizen responsibility to go get, because that's what I did. I went and got it. And I have them in the email. You got so many of them and they are outdated. They need to be updated and revised. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you so much for your recommendation. So do you have any other comments from citizens and delegates? If not, then we don't have any other business that, oh, I apologize. Oh, Mr. Schaefer.
Madam Mayor?
Good evening.
Good evening. Phil Schaefer, 9064 Myrtle Drive.
Yes, sir.
Coming to you in personal capacity.
Yes, sir.
So I'm gonna share a little vote we had Tuesday with the county commissioners, because I thought you ought to be aware of it. You all have an annexation on your docket at some point for Doris Road. This is probably gonna bring back memories because there was a prior annexation on Doris Road that you served on the Citizens Committee for when the county objected. I ring it to you just as kind of a word of, well, let me just recount it to you. I was ordered to provide a letter of objection to the city. And the words that I was told were, "A letter of objection that will burn a hole through the table when I sign it." Because the county commissioners are kind of angry about 155 units going in on Doris Road. That's a one-unit acre zone district. You're being shot out to get four units an acre. And that was the same, I think, when you served on the City Committee, because we saw that 10 acres come through and they wanted something more dense. And we kind of went to mediation. So I just wanted to alert you that I don't think the letter's been written yet. The county attorney is working on it. So Amanda, that's gonna come probably to you, Madam Mayor, and to the city attorney and as well as to Ms. Reed, just to let you know. I don't know when the letter's gonna get signed by the chair, but our 30 days is running out at the county. I don't know if it's tomorrow or Monday. In terms of workdays, we have the 30 days to, or 45 days rather, to respond to you when we're gonna object on some of these annexations. I just wanted to make sure as a courtesy, because I know it was a, it was kind of a heated meeting. But then we've been having heated meetings lately for all kinds of things. And the other piece of news I guess I can share, because I don't think it's gonna be a secret. On the 22nd, 23rd, I think Allison, our manager, is going to provide the county commissioners with a request for a moratorium on certain activities in the county. Our meeting on Tuesday night, I know you all have had it because I've sat in some of these with you as well, when we've had 100 or so people against things. We spent an hour on each of three cases with such opposition, angry, vehement, standing at the podium, arguing over the traffic, just like you all see each time we get these land use cases. And I think everybody's about ready to throw their hands up and say, what in the world is going on? So if my guess is right, I think the county commissioners are probably gonna try and adopt a set period of time. Don't know if it'll be 90 days or what it'll be, but several months worth of moratorium to study. How do we get around some of this growth? Because it's starting to affect people and they're coming to our podiums livid. And, and, okay, well, I'm a planner. I'm trying to figure it out. But sometimes there is no way to figure it out. People want to develop their land and we've got a lot of problems to try and accommodate. Service delivery, emergency services delivery, timeframes. Every time I bring a case before the county commissioners, just so the chief here knows, it's the same for the sheriff's department. Every month, we get the same impact statements. Timeframes for reporting to have folks come and answer an emergency call. Five years ago was 10 minutes. Now it's 25 minutes. Fire, same deal. We're down so many personnel. Just for the Doris Road, and the reason I'm coming to you personally, because on the Doris Road side, I've talked to the chief, the fire chief. There's a problem with trying to serve that side of town with fire. That's a lot of homes going in Doris. And as you remember, that, that's like 3,000 linear feet as you drive on the street to get to that original annexation.
Where on Doris Road are you referring to?
It's up Doris Road from Chicago, half a mile.
Not the Doris Road near the courthouse?
No, no, no. Up, up on the north side of town.
Oh, there's two Doris Roads?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That one goes down to North Douglas Elementary School.
Right, to the, at the elementary school. So someone years ago reached through the school from the city to annex 10 acres north of the school on Doris. That's 3,000 linear feet away from what's going on. Anyway, so I'm just bringing it to you because as a courtesy and as a planner, I'm kind of, what in the world are we gonna do? And I, and I know Allison's trying to get the county commissioners in a land use retreat to try and see what we can do. But I would hope at some point, we could all sit down together and figure out what to do. Because the transportation issue is multi-millions of dollars trying to solve. And I just offer that as, I would sure like to sit in there and help everybody kind of work through this. But you will get a letter, an official letter of objection from the county chair, and they were mad. Just, just, and I know you all faced the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Every month. Land use cases are hard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for being concerned with the city and the county, and that's what we want. We, we want to work together. And so we will look forward to that information that you're alerting us to. And after November, when all the dust is cleared for the elected body at the county- cleared for the elected body at the county with the Board of Commissioners and Chair, then it's, it is our intent to have quarterly meetings that we sit down together as city council and Board of Commissioners, and have conversations about our community and how it grows.
Appreciate it.
Direction. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Proton, for alerting me to Mr. Schaefer. If you don't have any other business, then this meeting is adjourned.